May I have your attention, please? Having been notified, we do have forty registered voters. I hereby call the special town meeting to order.
Let's leave.
This is a special town meeting for the town of Millville, May the eleventh, 2015. Time now is six thirty-five. Will everybody rise and face the flag, please, while we have the pensive, please? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. Let us have a moment of silence for our first responders who were there for us during difficult situations and who lay down their lives every day of the year. May we also have in our thoughts our military personnel, both men and women, who are serving worldwide and here in the states and doing the same to keep us free. Is there anyone in the present who has not ever been to a special or annual town meeting here? I see no hands, so everybody should be well aware of the rules and how town meetings function, so therefore, I'm not going to go into a lengthy discussion. One of the things I do want to say, though, is I am looking for two individuals. I have been notified that one of our present members of the Finance Committee will not be seeking reappointment, and that lady, Mrs. Kelly Capazoli, I want to thank her for her tireless effort that she, during the time she spent on this Finance Committee. It's not an easy job, and it's, at certain times of the year, a very strong commitment. So I am looking for someone to replace her. If you're interested, please see me or notify the Executive Secretary, and she can pass the information on to me. Also, I have been notified that Mrs. Mary Ryan would like to step down. I don't want to lose her, but I can understand where she's coming from. Mary has served on the Finance Committee for better than forty years. If there's anybody who knows the answers, it's Mary about the finances of this town. She has been a guiding light to all our members on the Finance Committee, to myself, the Board of Selectmen, the Town Accountant, and everyone involved in the running of your town. She will surely, surely be missed. I don't want to lose her, but I understand where she's coming from, so if anyone wants to step up and try to fill those shoes, please feel free to notify me or the Executive Secretary. Okay? Thank you, Mary. All right, let's get down to it. We're going to go start off with a special town meeting. We only have three articles, so we should get to it fairly quickly. I will read the article. The people who make the motion, all they will say will be moved in the words of the article. All of you should have in front of you a packet, a red packet that you picked up in the back, with all the material available to you. So if you'll take out the special town meeting warrant, we will begin. Snow and ice deficit. To see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds a sum of money to fund Highway Department snow and ice removal. Account number zero 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 one dash four two three dash five two four zero dash zero zero to supplement the fiscal year 2015 town budget approved under Article nine of the annual town meeting warrant dated May twelfth, 2014, or take any other action thereto in relation thereto. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator. Is there a second?
Who's seconded? That was Richard on the Finance Committee who seconded it. Mary? Marcia. Sorry. Helen's laughing at me because I called her something else earlier than night. The motion, the article's been moved and seconded in a discussion. Recommendation from the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends the article as written as a transfer of thirty thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and eleven cents from account zero zero four four zero 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 five seven eight nine zero one, and five thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars from account zero zero four four zero 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 five seven eight nine zero zero, and one thousand, one hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-one cents from free cash to fund the deficit of one hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents in FY15 snow and ice budget.
That first figure was thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and eleven cents, is that correct?
Correct.
The second figure was five thousand, five hundred and forty-six?
Four, five thousand, four hundred and forty-eight.
Forty-eight?
Correct.
Okay. And the third figure was one hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-one cents?
Correct.
Slightest recommendation?
I have the board's selectmen.
Right handed?
Right handed, I'm sorry.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. Article two. Fiscal year 2015. Budget adjustment, education. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from any available funds the sum of fifteen thousand, one hundred dollars to fund the education line item entitled Tri-County Tuition. Account number zero 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 one dash three zero zero dash five seven eight zero dash one zero within the fiscal year 2015 town budget under Article nine of the annual town meeting warrant on May twelfth, 2014, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the board of selectmen recommends the article number two as written.
Mr. Chairman, Finance Committee, your recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends the article as written as a transfer of fifteen thousand, one hundred dollars from free cash to supplement the education Tri-County tuition line item.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Selectmen, your recommendation from the board?
The board of selectmen recommends the article as written as a transfer of the numbers as written.
Who's seconded it? John? And John Laurel seconded it, Mr. Marshall. Motion's been made and seconded in a discussion. Seeing none? Everyone in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those in favor say nay? The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. Article three. Prior year unpaid bills. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from any available sums, funds, a sum of money for the payment of unpaid bills of previous fiscal years pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section sixty-four, or take any other action relative thereto. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the board of selectmen recommends our article as written.
Is there a second? John Laurel? Second? Mr. Chairman, Finance Committee, your recommendation? The Finance Committee?
Having no knowledge of any prior unpaid bills, Finance Committee recommends striking the item.
Amendment to the motion that's been made to strike the article, is there a second?
Second.
Second?
Wing.
Ms. Wing seconded it? Any discussion about striking the article since there are no unpaid bills? Seeing none? Everyone in favor say aye?
Aye.
Everyone say nay? The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. Ms. Wing? She's been waiting for that. Mrs. Wing has made a motion to dissolve the warrant to special town meeting. Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The ayes have it. The article's been dissolved. Special town meeting has... I move to adjourn special town meeting. Not adjourn, what? You want to make a motion?
What?
Roland, Roland Barrett seconded that. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn the special town meeting. Any discussion? There being none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The ayes have it. It is a vote. We will be in recess, so to speak, now until seven o'clock at the time of our annual town meeting, so you need to go out and get a drink of water or take care of something now if it's time to do it. We will re- May I have your attention, please? May I have a count, an official count from the back, please, of how many registered voters we now have, residents? Seventy-one?
Correct.
Thank you. And now being seven o'clock, I do call the annual town meeting for May the eleventh, 2015, to order. Want to go over the things a little bit as we go through the articles? If you want to speak to an article once discussion is open, I would ask if you want to, opponent, an opponent of the article, or you want to oppose an article and you want to speak on it, come down and you get in line behind this microphone. Okay? If you want to speak a second time, you have to get to the end of the line. We're going to go through it that way. Does everybody understand? So as soon as we open up for discussion, if you want to have anything to say about it, come down to this microphone and line up. Okay? We're going to try and go through this as quickly as we can. Right now, I'd like to introduce, recognize Allen M. Hemmelberger, who is the Superintendent of Schools, Blackstone Valley Regional School District, Blackstone Millville Regional School District. Dr. Fitzpatrick, who is our superintendent for the Blackstone Valley Vocational Technical High School. And Dr. Fitzpatrick, I'm going to ask you to move from there down to here on the front row. That way, we don't confuse you with Jerry Finn's brother or something like that, think you're a resident, okay? Also, I'd like to introduce Melon Matthew, who is our Town Accountant, has been so for many, many years, has kept us out of the financial ruin, protected our funds. Gary Brackett is here, he's our Town Council. He's there somewhere. I think he went over. There he comes. So he'll be speaking on anything legal, all right? If we broach a subject for the concern of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District, I will allow the Superintendent of Schools to speak, since he is our superintendent. The same applies to Dr. Fitzpatrick, since he is the superintendent of the Blackstone Valley Technical Vocational High School, okay? And Melon Matthew, if she needs to speak about some matters of financial. Okay? Any questions? Okay, folks. Get your sneakers on, let's go. I hope to get out of here in a reasonable time. If we reach ten o'clock, I'm going to ask the audience, depending on where we are in the warrant, whether we stay or whether we adjourn until tomorrow night at seven o'clock. Article one. Monetary increases. To see if the town will vote to authorize that any motion or amendment to increase any monetary articles or line items as recommended by the Finance Committee presented to this town meeting shall be out of order unless such motion or amendment states the source of funding as being from available free cash or the line item, article, or other funding source that will be reduced by the same amount or take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Chairman.
Move the article as written.
Yes, second?
Second.
Ms. Wing seconded it? Everybody understand this article? Any discussion? If you make an amendment to any other financial article to transfer any money from somewhere, you better be able to tell us exactly where you're going to get it from, from what line item you're going to get it from, and where it's going to go, okay? Or you're going to be out of order. Seeing no discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. Article two. Authorized loans. To see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow money in anticipation of revenues of the fiscal year beginning July the first, 2015, in accordance with provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section four, and to issue a note, or notes, therefore, payment within one year, and to renew any notes as may be given for a period of less than one year in accordance with provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seventeen, or take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Roland?
Mr. Moderator, the board of selectmen recommends our article as written.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Wing? Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends the article as written.
Any discussion? I see none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. Article three. Highway Department, Chapter ninety. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, to borrow or to transfer from any available funds or any combination thereof, a sum of money for the Highway Department to be used for engineering, construction, reconstruction, and/or repair to town roads and bridges, with said funds to be reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under Mass. General Law, Chapter ninety, or take any action in relation thereto. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the board of selectmen recommends the article as written.
Sir, second? Mr. Chairman, Finance Committee, your recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends the article as written.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. Article four. Revolving funds. To see if the town will vote to create and/or continue authorizing revolving funds for certain town departments pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and one half for the fiscal year beginning July the first, 2015, as follows. Cable access. Spending authority. Cable access committee. Revenue source. Charter communication fees. Program costs related to operating local cable channels. Expense cure limit, fifteen thousand dollars. Police department. Chief of Police. Farm fees. Costs related to fund expenses incurred, one thousand dollars. Inspection fee, inspection fees. Electrical and plumbing inspectors, inspection fees. Salaries above base salary for inspectors, five thousand dollars. Animal control. Animal control officer. Licensing fees and violations. Salaries above base salary for officers, five thousand dollars. Senior center. Council on Aging. Facility rental income. Senior center repairs or maintenance, five thousand dollars. Senior center. Council on Aging. Van ridership fee donations. Van-related maintenance and expenses, five thousand dollars. Partial Recreation Commission, commission. Partial Recreation Commission, ball field user fees. Maintenance and improvements to ball fields or playgrounds, five thousand dollars.
Mr. Moderator, the board of selectmen recommend our article as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Wing? Finance Committee's recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends the article as written.
There being none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. Article five. Cable licensing fees. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the lesser amount of either fifteen, fifty percent of any fees collected in the cable license fund and as return from the cable license holder to the town, or seven thousand, five hundred dollars, and forward said funds to the Superintendent of Schools of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District, or used by the Director of Library and Media Services to enhance the curriculum offering, offerings that are available in the school district, and further to authorize the Cable Access Committee to forward said funds on or before June the first, 2016, or take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the board of selectmen recommend our article as written.
There's a second?
Second.
John? Is that you or Joe? Joe? Joe Repose. Mr. Chairman, Finance Committee, your recommendation, please?
Finance Committee recommends the article as written.
Any discussion? There being none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. Article six. Fund capital budget. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from any available funds a sum of money to fund the fiscal year 2016 proposed capital budget, or take any other action relative thereto submitted by the Capital Programs Committee. W. Ozillo, you want to make a motion?
I want to make a motion that we accept our article as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who's seconding?
Mr. Chairman, recommendations, Board of Selectmen?
Mr. Moderator, the board of selectmen recommend our article as written.
Any discussion? There being none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. Article seven. Reallocation of MSBA funds. New capital line item. To see if the town will vote to reallocate the amount of one hundred thousand dollars from the final reimbursement payment received from the construction grant awarded to the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for the construction and equipping of the Millville Elementary School currently allocated an MES water account number zero three zero one dash zero 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 dash five three zero nine dash four two to fund a new capital line item entitled MES Fire Tank, or to take any action relative thereto. Capital Planning Committee?
Capital Planning Committee. Article seven as written.
Thank you. Sir, second? Brooks? Seconded it? Any discussion? There being none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. Article eight. Stabilization fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from any available funds a sum of money to be placed in the previously created stabilization fund under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty, Section five B, or take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Chairman, Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the article as written as a transfer of thirteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and nine cents from free cash.
What's that figure again?
Thirteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and nine cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Kelly, seconded it? Recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
Mr. Moderator, the board of selectmen recommend our article eight as written.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Name and address, please.
Yes, sir. Jane Regio, Southern Diana Circle, Millville. I would like to move to amend Article eight stabilization fund to move the thirteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and nine cents as recommended by the Finance Committee from free cash to the Blackstone Millville Regional Assessment.
There's a second?
Second.
Who's seconded it? I know there's going to be some explanation, some discussion on this. For one moment, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. I made this amendment because Blackstone Millville Regional School District submitted its request for funds and was budgeted, the assessment was budgeted significantly less than the requested assessment, understanding that these committees have worked very hard to try to balance the budget and move the funds into appropriate places. We really felt that the school committee, there were no additional areas to try to get some money from other than this free cash. Since it is free cash moving into a stabilization fund, I realize it decreases the overall amount of the stabilization fund, but it gets the school closer to its requested assessment amounts to meet its needs, and I would like to remind the committee that last year when the school had additional funds coming in, we refunded forty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars to the town, to its accounts, and so I guess we're asking for a little bit of that back.
Chairman, Finance Committee, written.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think we recognize the need of the Blackstone Millville School District. What additional contribution? This year in total, we believe we're giving them an increase of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars, which includes an additional contribution of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Our reasoning behind putting additional funds into the stabilization fund is really twofold. First is, state guidelines is that is recommended to have at least ten percent of the previous year's levy in that account. And right now, we're approximately six point seven seven, so we're under that. And that's going to play a important role because I think you all know, our town hall needs quite a bit of work on the capital side. And we're going to be here at the next town meeting, probably eyeing what we need to do to repair that building. And so adding additional funds to our stabilization is going to improve our borrowing ability, our ability to do that job that needs to get done. So we were trying pretty hard to put as much money as we possibly could into stabilization. We added in fifty thousand dollars going into our last meeting with the FINCAR, which was also our public hearing. Late breaking news from North Fogaddy was that we had additional students that were accepted and committed to go there. That cut into that additional fifty thousand we were going to put into stabilization. The number you see, that thirteen thousand, is the difference between us. So that's where that amount came from, and that's why we were hoping to put that money into stabilization.
Who else wants to talk? Brooke, did you want to say something? Anybody else want to address this subject matter?
All left three to just a little road, somebody may know me from my time on Finance Committee. Our stabilization fund for this town is essentially a savings account. For anyone that's ever had a savings account, you all know that when you pick at it a little bit, a little bit, a little bit, over time, it disappears. That goes the opposite way, too. When you add to it a little bit, a little bit, a little bit at a time, it increases over the course of many years. The Finance Committee was attempting to put fifty thousand dollars into this, and as Mr. Vello just explained, due to the deficit that was primarily created by our education portion of our budget, it was reduced down to thirteen thousand dollars, thirteen five dollars per over time. And I just think it's not responsible to take that money and put it into a yearly general operating budget when we really need to consider what's going to happen in our future. So I think giving them the additional one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for additional contribution was very generous, and I think it should remain at that. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak to this article? I see no one. Call for a vote. First, we will vote on the amendment, which is to take the thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars and nine cents and instead of placing it into the stabilization fund, place it into the, what line, what up, what line item was it?
Blackstone Millville Regional Assessment.
Blackstone Millville Regional Assessment. Everybody understand what we're saying? Any further discussion? Ain't none? I call for a vote on the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it, the amendment fails. Back to the original article. You take thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and nine cents and place it into the stabilization fund. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, it is a vote, I so declare. Article nine, fiscal year budget. What we're going to do right now, before we go into the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen budget, is the Finance Committee would like to give you a presentation. Where I'm going to step away and move this podium over to the side, open up the curtain, pull down the screen, and they're going to give you a PowerPoint presentation.
Hello, you have the floor. Okay, thank you all very, very much. What we tried to do, this is my third year working on the budget, and I find it kind of fascinating how this thing all comes together. Small town or not, what we do here is the same as any large municipality throughout the Commonwealth. And there's a lot of pieces to it. There's a lot of information, I think, that the public needs to know about how a budget comes together, where we're heading. These are our responsibilities, I'm not going to read them all per se, but we're responsible for building the budget, submitting it to the annual town meeting after getting this approved. To do that, we developed a series of goals, seven in total, I'm not going to read them off as you're reading the yearlies here, but we're trying to move the town forward. Goals are set to be able to identify critical need, apply funds to it, and work towards the future. It is a process to that. The process started way back in November. The Secretary put out a memo to all the departments telling them that it's budget season. If you get your budget requests in, it justify your budgets based on a zero-based budget platform. And really what that is, is a little bit different, and we tried to incorporate it this year, is to say start from zero, each account, and build your budget on a quantified need and not do what happens every year in terms of, this is what we did last year, add ten percent, and this is how, a couple of percent, and that's how we're going to go into the next year. We tried to do it based on need. A couple of key points. The FINCAR started meeting in early January in earnest, we met thirteen times. We also had three meetings with the Board of Selectmen, joint meetings, and those joint meetings were as mischecks. First meeting, just guidance from the Board of Selectmen, where they want to see us go. And then from there, as we developed the budget, we met with them to get an idea if we're on the right track, if they had any input, and we moved on, developed a finish goal. We also met with the various department heads throughout this period. They scheduled time, they came in, they defended their budget, we made adjustments, some up, some down. We also met with the school committee, Blackstone Millville Regional School District. They came into our meeting three times, and they were very instructive meetings. I went to their meeting at least once, and I sat in on a meeting they had with the Board of Selectmen once. They, I believe, are going in a direction that needs to be, they need to be going. They're bringing stability, and they're going to bring us a plan for the next go-around. So I think we're getting with the school committee, but also with all the other departments. And we're seeing a lot of progress, and we're very pleased with that. From there, we had a public hearing. In the public hearing, we had the final budget, and that took us to the meeting tonight. Our assumptions, our assumptions are, as they have been several years, that revenues are flat. We continue to rely on free cash and such useful ways, ambulance receipts and to balance our budget. And you'll see later on that what we have to take to balance our operating budget. Chapter seventy funding. We think it's going to remain stable, we've been following that quite a bit. I see Representative Curros here. It's important to keep our towns in mind when you build a budget. We're getting to a teetering point, tipping point, in our ability to fund not only the Blackstone Millville Regional School District, but Tri-County, where we have students there, North Fogaddy, and BBT on that. Our revenues cannot keep up with all the needs of the towns, including the education. And we're getting to a point, at some point, there's going to be, I hate to use this because it's going to have to be an attempt for an override, to be able to fund the budgets in the manner that conceivably you need to be funded in the future. And you need that state help more than any of us. Anything you can do to help us would be appreciated. Chapter ninety money, I think it's going to remain stable, you'll see later on, and we've got quite a bit on that. Cherry sheet funds, I'm not sure where they're heading. The state's got some budget woes that they're trying to balance their budget, there's some nine C cuts, MAFV negotiations, that's, that's an area where we have concern, not because of a person getting paid for the quality of work that they're doing, but our inability to be a part of the process and just be the bill payer afterwards and not having sufficient funds to live up to the agreements that were made. And so that becomes a problem when building a budget. Some of our priorities, we wanted to maintain at least current levels of our services. We wanted to start bringing back the level of services provided to the residents prior to the recession. We've had some success in that. We've had success at the library, where the certification is back. We've had success at the senior center, where they were able to operate and function independently. And we're starting to look again at the town hall to bring that up to the level of services we have. We've pulled significant cutbacks in the hours of operation, the number of hours the people who work there actually work. We really don't have anybody who works in the town hall that is a full-time equivalent. There are half-time equivalents, if not less. And that's one of the areas where we'll see that in the future. We're looking at modest capital investment. We want to fund the Blackstone Millville Regional School District at levels that we can afford comfortably. And we really want to grow the stabilization fund for what I mentioned earlier, because of our future needs in the capital. Looking at a budget, you know, I wondered where all the money came from. And there isn't many, in the town of Millville, there's not many sources of funds. If you look at local receipts, those are excise taxes for cars, boats or what have you, permits, rate fees, anything like that. And it's not a whole lot of money. And our state receipts, not that high either, four hundred and sixty-three thousand. Our levy for FY sixteen is where the brunt of our funding comes from for our budget, four point three million. Here are a couple of dairy solutions in there, and there's also some Title V receipts that we use to fund the Title V program, the loan program. So our total revenue was four, five point four million. And before we can say, this is what we've got to work to, there are some numbers that we've got to subtract from that. One is the overlay, SS's overlay, correct? And what that is, is the assessments, when they give an abate, tax abate, the money has to come from somebody, somewhere. So it comes off the top of our revenues. Tax title, cherry seed charges, those are miscellaneous charges that the state charges the town for services. One in particular is the vasco spray, right off the bat on that, that you see on the cable news, if you want your yacht sprayed, they'll come in and do it. But there is a charge to that, the town pays for that. So those reductions ended up at a hundred and six thousand. So our projected revenue, our total projected revenue is five million three hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and that's an increase of two hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. Now, there's some other income around that we also look at. We got FEMA reimbursement for storm damage, and we use that to pay, actually pay the snow and ice deficit. Free cash, four hundred and sixteen thousand we had. Free cash, that's a tough term. Free cash is the money left over in your budget at the end of the previous fiscal year, plus any additional fees and permit costs that came in that was above projections. Say that correctly, Marilyn? We also had some release of capital funds, four thousand dollars. Capital projects that were voted on in previous town meetings, when the projects were done, if there was money left over, went back to the general fund, and ambulance receipts a little bit. Our stabilization account, that was mentioned before, there's some major increases this year. Twister County Retirement, fifty-two thousand dollars. Education accounts. Town Hall was for an additional clerk to support the building services department. It's been out without a clerk for many, many years, and we're hoping that will improve the services there. The communications department was due to a new IT contract. So we ended up with increases of about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars against an increase of revenue of two hundred and seventy-four thousand. So right off the bat, we're in the hole. Excuse me, I've been sick down here for the past few days. School budget is our largest share of our budget, but it's probably one of our most important. The school budget is, the school, education budget itself, the one that I'm really the most concerned about is North Fogaddy, where the cost per student is twenty-one thousand dollars out of county cost. And the number of students that are planning on attending there continues to rise. This year it's a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. It's an increase to forty-five thousand free this year. It's an increase of forty-five-thousand, free this year. Fifty percent increase. So we're watching this very closely. Another area of concern is the highway department. And I'm gonna turn it over now to Helly Capitelli, so I can catch my breath there.
Yeah, I just wanna speak to you about the highway department. This year, we level-funded the highway department. There is something important to note, is fiscal year 2015, state-funded pothole monies of fifteen-thousand are available to the town of Millville, but it must be utilized in full by six-thirty, 2015. Today, it sits at, what is it, five-eleven, and so those funds are gonna go away in about forty days. And as you know, you've driven these roads, and you know that we have significant potholes on a number of the main streets. That's something that we need to address. We've had, it's still a good situation, but a little bit of a lack of performance from the highway department. So we level-funded the highway department. The snow and ice removal cost came from free cash, remaining from free cash. But what Chapter ninety is, Chapter ninety monies are, they're reimbursable to the state of Massachusetts. For the state of Massachusetts, excuse me. And the town grants the money to fix roadways, and then, or short-term borrow it, and then we file all the documents, and then the state gives us the monies back. I want to point to the next slide, which shows the funds that are available to the town. Fiscal year thirteen, there was forty-seven-thousand-six-sixty-one available to the town. Fiscal year fourteen, hundred-two-thousand-seventy-seven-four. Fiscal year fifteen, one-five-three-seven-seven-five. And fiscal year sixteen, one-oh-two-four-twenty. That's a total of four-hundred-six-thousand-six-thirty. We, we as a finance committee and board of selectmen, I don't wanna speak for the board of selectmen, but have tried to work with the highway department to get these monies, get the engineering plans drawn up, submitted to the state, so we can actually do some real physical work on these roads, and then have the state reimburse us. And a lot of our efforts have fallen short. Let me just move to the next slide. So in order for the chapter monies to be provided, engineering plans have to be drawn up, submitted and approved to the state, as I said earlier. The last street we paved in Millville was a portion of Chestnut Hill Road, from about mid-Chestnut Hill Road, right about where a fork said the old Chestnut Hill Road, and down, almost if you get into town. Funds are available and sitting in an account earmarked for road repairs. So roadways in the town of Millville that are in need of repaving include the following, and I'm sure you can find more on there, but Central Street, Ironstone Street, and Larkin Street.
This is another area, you guys have a project. This is another area, the subject of thought is how bad the town is doing. To my knowledge, the town has never had to borrow money to fund the Chapter ninety. We used to take that money out of free cash, or money that we had on the road from the budget at the end of the year, to be able to fund a hundred dollars, fifty dollars, one-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Now, if we wanted to fund that money, we could go and say, let's spend three-hundred or four-hundred thousand dollars. We don't have that money. We would have the town borrow it, and then do the work, tie the proper paperwork, and then get it fixed. So the town's inability to do the things they did before is slowly wasting away in a number of areas. And I think everybody should be aware of that, because we look at something and say, the town hall could have cost us fifteen thousand or sixty... The town hall could have cost us perhaps millions or millions of dollars. We don't know what it is, but it's just that every area that we look at, no matter what it is, we get out of it, we get bought, fifteen-hundred thousand dollars a year, and we have the power to... If every piece of this town is getting this, we'll be in the... The people have to be aware of that.
One thing further I do want to say, I do not know the exact time periods, but the chapter money, Chapter ninety monies expire at a certain point in time. So there's the potential that, you know, soon the thirteen monies go away, you never get to get your hand on them. So your property values deteriorate, roadways continue to not be created. And so basically, we need to take some kind of an action as a town.
Okay, and the original budget that was presented to us was five-million-nine-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand dollars, four-hundred-and-two. That was a deficit of over a half-a-million dollars. We renewed it, we cut it back, we ended up with a deficit of two-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand dollars, forty-eight. And that budget we recommended, to balance it, we used two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and fifty cents for free cash, and another twenty-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty of assessors overlay that was released back to the general fund that wasn't needed anymore for an out-year.
Okay, just wanna briefly go over the capital budget, the future. We are set as capital committee, monies aside, for police car for fiscal year seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars. For nineteen, another ten thousand dollars. For new ambulance for fiscal year nineteen, twenty thousand dollars. For the senior center, a new stove, commercial-grade stove, which is needed, ten thousand-five-hundred. A new refrigerator for fiscal year seventeen, forty-five-hundred, that's a partial payment. We're basically banking money for a couple of years, so that when the time comes for a refrigerator, there's money sitting there. The town hall, fifteen thousand dollars for a new server, which is initially needed. And then the Millville Elementary School, replace their water tank. Fire protection, partial payment, we don't know what year that's gonna be, that's why there's a question mark. And then you have to note that a lot of these are down payments for the future. So this is something that a lot of towns do, do, and our towns have really do for a lot of years. And we've now decided that we're gonna earmark some money for the future, so that when it comes to surprise, we need a new ambulance in three years, four years.
The area is concerned going forward, we talked quite a bit about education, the highway department. The town clerk's office, every year, I've been up there, part of this, is a debate whether the town clerk's position is a full-time position or is it a stipend position, and where is it going in the future? And it came up again this year, and I don't think we can resolve that as a finance debate. I really think some sort of study needs to be done, as to get a resolution on that. And a big issue that's gonna be coming up on the town is the addition of the town hall, and what we're gonna do about that. We do have some recommendations, and recommendations taking into account everybody, signing with the board of selectmen to develop a strategic plan. And they've started that, they've got some, they've started the basic pieces on that, and they know they're gonna work on it. Talking with Allen on his plan, that's great, because once we understand what that is, we know what we need, where we're going, then we can start funding it. Planning board to complete, to master the plan. Highway department to develop a road plan, which we'd be glad to help them with. The capital planning committee is on their way to developing a full-fledged five-year plan. And the finance committee needs to do the same, our committee, to develop a funding plan, to identify the tasks and the objectives in all those plans, and accomplish the goals of those things. The tasks and the objective are those things that we need to find to make those plans seem to fruition.
And that could be short-term borrowing, we're working with a political bond for the town, it's a whole number of things. So if someone comes to us and says, "I need an ambulance," that we'll have their five-year plan, that we're going to borrow in a certain year, and it's gonna mature in a certain year. So there's a lot of things to think about, so if you actually have a strong plan for the future capital plan, you can actually look at it and try to make an educated decision as to what's the best start.
We thank you for hearing this, I know it was a bit long, but for a small town, it's quite a big, only, idea that we think the residents need to know and understand.
I wanna thank the, I wanna thank the finance committee for the tremendous amount of work that they have done, and also the board of selectmen, our town accountant. And this is the first time since I've been here that I think a presentation of this caliber has ever been presented to the town. It's also the first time that I have ever sat here and listened to my town officials talk about looking down the road five years, and planning five years in advance. All we have to do now is get behind them, push them along, and help them. Again, I'd like to give them all due credit. All right, we're gonna go into Article Nine. But first, let me read the article, get it started. Oh, and Brooks on my way out, he corrected my pronunciation of fiscal budget. My wife does it all the time. Sorry, folks, I'm from the south. You're just gonna have to live with it. It's okay. You know what I'm talking about, though, don't you? All right, fiscal year 2016 budget. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, to borrow, or to transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be deemed necessary to defray town expenses for all departments, including debt and interest, and compensation for town officers, and to provide for the reserve fund for the fiscal year beginning July the first, 2015, and ending June the thirty of 2016, or take any other action in relation thereto." Chairman of the Finance Committee.
I'm Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends the article as written. It is to transfer twenty-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty dollars and fifty cents from available release assessors overlay, and two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and fifty cents for free cash, fund the deficit in FY sixteen budget.
Give me those figures again, please, Chairman. Give me those figures again, please.
Twenty-two thousand what? Twenty-two thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty dollars and fifty cents.
From?
Assessors overlay. And two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and fifty cents for free cash.
Okay. Is there a second? Mary Ryan segmented it. All right, what we're going to do, ladies and gentlemen, is this. You have the proposed FY sixteen budget in your hand.
Yes.
Sweet little hands. Before I go on, Representative Curros, thank you for being with us tonight. Do you have something you'd like to say?
I could give a brief update on the state budget, but there's no need to.
How about after we get through the budget, I'll give you an opportunity to speak with, there's no objections from there, okay? Thank you for being with us tonight, Marilyn. All right, what I'm gonna do is call off the different sections of the budget. If you wish to hold that item, holler out "hold" and give me your name, such as moderator's salary, or moderator's expenses, selectman's salaries, selectman's expenses, executive secretary's stuff, this nature, each section. If you wanna hold an item, or you wanna discuss it, holler out which one you wanna hold, give me your name. And what we're going to do is, we're gonna go through there, and we're gonna vote on all the ones that are not held. If there's not a hold on the item, we're gonna vote on them, get them out of the way, then we'll go back and get the ones that are held, okay? Anybody wanna hold moderator's expenses? Anybody wanna hold selectman's expenses? Anybody wanna hold executive secretary department? Anybody wanna hold total finance committee expenses? Anybody wanna hold town account expenses or department? Total assessors expenses. Systems Administration Department expenses. Grab me, grab me town council? Oh, town council. Systems Administration expenses. Town clerk department, our expenses. Total elections and registration. Census salaries, our expenses. Planning board expenses. zoning board expenses. Insurance accounts. Police department. Building inspector department. Gas and plumbing inspector. Electrical inspector. Civil Defense Department. Animal Control Department. Pre-warden department. Communications Department. Communications Department? Total Gasoline expenses? Total Education expenses? Highway Surveyor Department or salary? Or total highway, total highway maintenance expenses? Total Snow and Ice Removal Expense? Highway Street Lighting? Highway Street Sweeping? Total Stormwater? Total Board of Health? Visiting Nurse Services? Total Human Services? Total Senior Center Expenses? Total Veterans Department? Total Irony Expenses? Total Parks and Recreation? Total Veterans Memorial Park? Total Historical Commission? Total Memorial Day Parade? Total Centennial Celebration? Total Cultural Council? Total Flag Warden? Total Debt and Interest? Hang on one moment, folks. I don't know when is the last time that we went through the budget and there hasn't been something held. All right. I therefore call for a vote for a budget which includes the transfers mentioned by the Chairman of the Finance Committee of $22,330.50 from the assessors overlay, $243,717.50 for free cash, for a grand total of $5,633,485. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare. First time, first time, I believe, and this is our ninety-ninth year, if I'm not mistaken. Next year will be our one-hundredth year as a corporation, so this is our ninety-ninth annual down meeting. I'm going out on a limb. I want to see that in a newspaper somewhere tomorrow. All right, Article Ten. Yes? Does anyone object to Representative Curis saying a couple of words? Any objections, raise your hand. There being none, Representative Curis, you want to step over to the mic and say a few words? Obje-, uh, the object word is "a few."
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everybody. Not too many will be able to leave, but I just want to inform them, so we've got to be very brief. I did want to provide just a very quick update on the state budget, where we stand. The House, we passed our budget about a week and a half ago. We approved a $38.05 billion budget. To put that in perspective for you, that's less than a three percent increase over last year's budget. So, so we are trying to practice the same fiscal conservatism that your FinCom is recommending here at the state level, that's a little bit of a departure over the past several years. But I'm pleased to say that, you know, we've only increased the budget by, by less than three percent. We did so, we funded the budget with no new taxes, no new fees, and for the first time in eight years, we've not touched the state's ready day fund as part of the budget process. Our ready day fund sits over a billion dollars, so, so we're very financially sound right now at the state level. Closer to home, Chapter Seventy funding, the Governor and his budget had proposed an increase, and here's the challenge, a town meeting always has, is our budget proposals are just that right now, as, as we sit here. What the state's going to give the town are just proposals, and until we get through the consolidated budget, you're really throwing darts at a dartboard that you don't know exactly what the money is that you're going to get from the state. That's just a timing issue that we'll always have to deal with relative to when town meeting happens and when the budget is done. But the, the Governor had proposed a $20 per student increase in Chapter Seventy for school funding. The House bumped that up marginally to $25 per student, which, again, if multiplied by their students, it, it becomes real money. The Senate will be taking up their budget next week, so now is the time to call your Senator and say, listen, there's an opportunity to argue in behalf of additional school funding. Now's the chance to do that. Revenue numbers have come in since we did our, that's always the benefit that the Senate has when they do their budget, is they have another month's worth of revenue numbers, including the big month of April, numbers came in, and we're tracking it at, at the state level, about, I believe, about $150 million ahead of, of plan. So, so there should be some flexibility relative to the Senate budget. We talked a little bit about Chapter Ninety funding, and if you saw the bar chart that was presented, it started at roughly $50,000 a year, went up to $100,000 a year, went up to $150,000 a year, and now it's back down to $100,000. That, that bump last year, the legislature had initially budgeted $100 million for Chapter Ninety funding for the state. We bumped that up to $200 million, and then in FY15, we funded it at $300 million. Governor Patrick had not released all of that money, he'd only released $200 million. So, the first numbers to hit your books here in town was only $200 million, your share of $200 million. Governor Baker, since that money was authorized but never dispersed, as soon as it took off, she released that additional $100 million, which is why you saw that bump in that one year. So, it essentially means about another $50,000 for your town, all you have to do is spend it and ask for reimbursement on it. This year, that, that Chapter Ninety funding is back to the pre-Ninety cap level of $200 million. That's, that's one. I'm not checking, you raised that question, I'll check on that for you, I'm not sure how many years you have spent it, but. I expect more than, than two or three, so I think you're okay. Well, if your numbers go back to 2013, I believe, is what you showed, so I think you're okay. But I'll, I'll confirm that. And the last two items, I think, that directly affect you, at least in our proposed budget, which you're going to have to, you know, go through the Senate, be reconciled and signed and along by the Governor, is we have put in for a 10% increase in regional school transportation, which directly will impact your, your, your school district. And the last thing is that the state, I believe, since the first time since I've been in the legislature, this is my fifth budget, the state is funding 100% of our share of special education, which will help as well. So, we're getting there, we're not out of the, you know, out of the storm yet, but the revenue numbers aren't really in, and I'm consciously optimistic moving forward. So, certainly happy to answer any questions, Bill, happy to let you get on with the meeting as well.
Anyone have a question? There being none.
Thanks, gentlemen, please.
Thank you very much, Representative Curis. I also like to take this opportunity to thank Representative Curis for being here. I think of all of you sitting here, think back, how many times has our state rep been at our town meeting and explained things? I think this is, what, the second time? And it's been him both times? Okay. Point taken. I'm not saying vote for him. I'm just saying, he's done a good job so far. Okay. Article Ten, Town Officers. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint the necessary town officers whose elections are not provided for, or take any other action in relation thereto. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the, Mr. Moderator, the Board of Selectmen recommends the article of the ten as written.
Is there a second? John Laura, seconded. Any discussion? There being none. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare. Article Eleven, Street Lasts. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to install, remove, or change street lasts if necessary for the fiscal year 2016, or take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Board of Selectmen recommends Article Eleven as written.
There's a second? Joey Poso. Any discussion? There being none. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare. Article Twelve, Personal Bylaw Amendments. Classification and Compensation Plan. To see if the town will vote to amend the town, to see if the town will vote to amend the town bylaws, Chapter Twenty, Personal Bylaw, Section Twenty-Dash-Eight, Compensation System, Paragraph D. Coverage to add and assign the position of Town Hall Secretary as a Grade Two. Secretary One job classification, or take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Board of Selectmen recommends Article Twelve as written.
Is there a second? Joey Poso. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare. Article Thirteen, Personal Bylaw Amendments, Dash, Minimum Wage. To see if the town will vote to amend the town bylaws, Chapter Twenty, Personal Bylaw, Section Twenty-Dash-Eight, Compensation System, Paragraph D. Coverage to amend effective July the first, 2015, by increasing the minimum pay for a Grade One position from $8.50 an hour to $9.00 an hour, and further, effective January the first, 2016, increase the minimum pay for Grade One position from $9.00 an hour to $10.00 an hour, or take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Board of Selectmen recommends Article Thirteen as written.
Is there a second? Said John? Joe? Any discussion? There being none. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare. Article Fourteen, Hunting Bylaw. To see if the town will vote to amend the town bylaws by adding thereto a new Chapter Thirty-Six, hunting as following. What I'm going to do right now is I'm going to ask Sergeant Coop, Coop, to come down from our police department, and he's going to explain this hunting bylaw to you. You have it in your little hot hands, so I'm not going to read the whole thing.
Just stand right there and just explain what this is. Sergeant Coop, go please. The hunting bylaw is, it's a bylaw the chief's looking to enact to protect the people that are going to visit the town and walk along this greenway path. It's designed to just prohibit the firing of firearms in that area. That's, that's about that on that. Mr. Moderator, I'm sorry, but this is the first time I've had to do this. Should I be reading this by law?
No, that's what I, you just want to, in general terms, explain what it is and why it is.
The reason we're looking to do this, the Department of Conservation and Recreation, they estimate that there's going to be 100,000 visitors to this bike way that's traveling between Rhode Island up towards the Massachusetts. It's going to travel through some parts of Millville that are going to be next to houses, but some that are not. With these 100,000 people that are going to visit here, there are no laws currently in effect that prohibit the use or firing of firearms around the greenway path. There are only two laws in effect right now that prohibit firing firearms in any situation. One, within 500 feet of a house, and the other, within 150 feet of, of a roadway. We feel that the state is taking measures to pass laws in the future for what we're told to protect this greenway, which is new to even the state of Massachusetts. We're just hoping that the town will pass this bylaw to be proactive in the protection of these many visitors. We do believe there's going to be a good amount of visitors based on the fact this is a departure and arrival zone, there's going to be a large parking lot, the Millville lock, that have people stop there and start off or, or arrive to, and, and that's the rationale for trying to pass this bylaw.
Thank you, sir. Chairman, I want to ask you to make a motion for the bottom.
The Board of Selectmen recommends Article Fourteen as written.
There's a second? John?
John Laura.
I think every, does anybody not understand what this bylaw is and what it's going to do and where it is in effect at? The bicycle path, the distant path that's going to go through town. Okay? No discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Valerie Haggerty, Portisby, Lang Street, Millville. I have a question. What is the impact on the existing hunting areas in Millville in general and specifically duck hunting?
Uh, sir, can you, can you address that? What are the hunting laws in, in Millville right now?
What are the hunting laws?
Yeah, in gen-, in general.
That you wouldn't be able to fire a firearm within 500 feet of a home or 150 feet of a roadway. So, we feel that this bike way path is somewhere in the middle there, so we're just trying to stop the discharge of firearms.
So, right now, people can hunt as long as they don't fire a firearm within 100, 500 feet of a home or 150 feet of a roadway. Okay? So, if you have 25 acres behind your house, as long as that person's 500 yards away from your house, he can hunt.
Is there, is the greenway going through any existing established hunting areas right now?
All of Millville, I can safely say would probably be a, a hunting area as long as it's not within 500 feet of a house or 150 feet of a roadway. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do understand.
The whole town of Millville.
I understand that. But I do understand that the chief is asking this one way, instead of being 150 feet to start a firearm within 150 feet of this bike pathway, he's asking for 500 feet instead. He's asking for 350 more feet than what the state mandates right now.
Okay.
I was just wondering if it was going through any existing established state or areas in Millville that are already classified hunting, where we don't have to worry about 150 feet of a roadway?
Sir, can you answer that question?
There is a whole lot currently in effect that protects. There is a whole law currently in effect that protects people that are walking on a greenway.
Yeah.
From what we're told from the state, they have not passed the law yet, that's why we're trying to get this bylaw enacted.
So I think the best way I can answer that question is, start at the top, at the Millville Town Line, where this bicycle pedestrian pathway starts, go all the way through to the other side, anywhere within 500 feet, they can't fire women. Okay? Okay.
Mr. Moderator, Keith Murphy, 35 miles away, I think I might be able to answer a little bit of her question. Would the proposed bylaw do in effect for waterfall hunting? There's no area of waterfall hunting that would have been affected by this bylaw anyway. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make an amendment to the first paragraph, the 36-1, I spoke to Chief Landry about this. I'm in complete agreement with the 500 feet, I do believe that some of the wording needs to be changed. The reason why I agree with the 500 feet is because of the lay of the land there, it lends itself to be an dangerous situation. So what I spoke to him about, and what I would like to see is, no person shall fire or discharge a firearm or actively hunt, excluding out archery equipment, within 500 feet of any playground, or within 500 feet of the paved pedestrian pathway of the Black Tunnel River Corridor located in the town of Millville. Now, it doesn't sound all that different, but it does make a huge difference for the chief.
Oh, it does make a huge difference?
It does.
And, do you have that written out?
I do.
Mr. Becken, I'm gonna call upon you to take a look at what he has written. Take a look at what is in this proposed bylaw. Tell us where we stand legally.
Was that thanks in the conversation you had with the chief, 'cause I know you've been working with him?
Because what this does, what this does, Mr. Moderator mentioned during one of the segments being dedicated, it's 100% true that with this bylaw, somebody could walk along the side of the bike path with a firearm, hunting, as long as they don't discharge their firearm. Unfortunately, if they do discharge their firearm at that close of a range, they break the bylaw, but there's a big chance that the damage is already too late, it's already gone. What this does is this allows him, if there's somebody within 500 feet of the bike path, it allows him to stop them, where the other one didn't do that. Okay? And that's why, and he was like, when I talked to him about it, kinda being surprised that it felt that way, but it's the way I feel. I don't want somebody to get hurt in my backyard.
I don't either.
I, uh, I'm scared you want time to get in and rub anybody else in this house, so...
I'm gonna ask you to pass that, what you, the amendment that you have written out there, Mr. Becken, and I want you to review that one, plus our one that's on in the article, and see where we stand legally.
Uh, sir? Can you come down here a minute, please?
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, here's my decision, based upon Town Council's recommendation. I'm not gonna allow the amendment at this time. The reason being is that it has not been reviewed by the Chief of Police, and he is unable to be contacted at this time. This amendment can be brought in in special town meeting, or at any time there's a town meeting, and this bylaw can be amended at that time. We want, we want the chief's recommendation on it, as our Chief of Police. Mr. Barrett, what do you think? Go answer, say what you understand.
I was just gonna mention that it's my right to ask the amendment and vote on the amendment, it's not a moderator deciding whether or not we give or deny amendment, number one.
Yes, it is. I can allow the amendment, or I cannot allow the amendment. That's under the rules of town meeting times.
I presented it in the method in which was required.
I have ruled.
It's not my fault that the chief is not here.
I have ruled.
I am doing something to prevent the town from having to do.
I, three times, I have ruled.
Understood.
Thank you. We'll go back to the original article, in the way that it was written. Any further discussion? There being none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay?
Nay.
Okay. Everybody in favor of the article, please stand up. Thank you. All those opposed to the article, stand up.
Those in favor of the article, please stand, so they can help them. Those in favor of the article, please stand.
Everybody in favor of the article, please stand up. The counters are gonna come around and count.
Yes, I'm not, don't count me.
Do you have the numbers? You made your counts? Alright, everybody set down. Everybody opposed to the article, please stand up. You have your count? Everybody's down. The vote is 25 yes, 20 no. The article passes. Article 15. Illegal Discharge of Firearms, to see if the town will vote to amend the... Illicit Discharge of Firearms, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Millville bylaws by adding therefore a new Chapter 81. Oh, Discharge of Bylaw, I'm sorry. Thank you. You're right, it didn't have anything to do with firearms, did it? Illicit Discharge Bylaw, to see if the town will vote to amend the town Millville bylaws by adding thereto a new Chapter 81, Illicit Discharge as follows, and I'm not gonna read the whole thing. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Board of Selectmen recommends article 15 as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
John? John Laura? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare. That's what happens when you see discharge, I say discharge, I immediately thought guns. That's like when my wife tells me, tells me about things, and she say, "You never hear me, you never listen to me, you don't even know what I'm saying." I said, "Oh, sure, I'll have another beer." Article 16, Zoning Bylaw Amendments, Solar District, to see if the town will vote to amend the town bylaws, Chapter 100, zoning, Article 1, General 100-21, classes of district, Paragraph B, overlay districts, to add the language below noted in bold print. And I'll, I'll read this real quickly, it says B, overlay districts, to carry out the purposes of this bylaw, the town of Millville is also divided into the following districts, that overlay the districts established in subsection A above. Renewable Energy Overlay District, map 120, parcel 28, map 127, parcel 1, and bold is map 122, parcel 18, map 122, parcel 9, map 122, parcel 10, map 122, parcel 101.1, and further to amend the zoning map of Millville, Massachusetts, to include parcel numbers 8, 9, 10, and 10.1, on accessories map 122, in the Renewable Energy Overlay District, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is anybody from the planning board here? Mr. Hurtou.
Richard Hurtou, 70 Quake Street, member of the planning board, I'd like to make a motion on the words of the article.
Thank you, sir, is there a second?
Second.
Who's seconded it? Name, please.
Claudette Barrett.
Claudette Barrett, okay. Mr. Hurtou, can you give a report on the public hearing that you held in Congress?
Yes, the public hearing was held at the upper office in the town hall. It was discussed the proposed zoning bylaw, the types of allowed use for the solar electric panels. We had mentioned, we had gone over the different locations, and this would be approved, and the meeting was closed, a vote was taken to support this article. Claudette, the date of the hearing, it was last Wednesday?
It was Tuesday.
Wednesday.
Broke it.
All right, these parcels of land are basically between Lincoln Street and 122, and that portion between the town barn and Lincoln Street.
Any, any discussion? There being none.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare. Article 17, Animal Control Bylaw Amendments, to see if the town will vote to amend the town bylaws, Chapter 40, Animals, deleted language appears in strike through, the strikes, and new amended language appears in bold. Okay, it's very lengthy, and I'm not gonna read the whole thing, everyone has a chance to look at it. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Board of Selectmen recommends article 17 as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Said John Laura? Any discussion? There being none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it? Excuse me, all opposed say nay? The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare. Ain't no offense, you think. I know you're trying to help me out, get out of here as quick as possible. Alright, the motion on the floor is resolved, the warrant. John Laura seconded the motion, any discussion? Anybody wanna object to that? There being no discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Those opposed say nay? The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare, this meeting is adjourned. Oh, excuse me, hold on a minute, folks, hold on a minute. Thank you, Roland, for reminding me. Roland would like to have, say a few words about Mr. Becken. Roland would like to have, say a few words about Mr. Beckett.
I just wanna let everyone know, I'm sure a lot of people know that we've been looking for a new law firm to represent the town of Millville. Great regret, Mr. Rapp, decided that he wants to spend more time with his family, he's retiring, and I would just like to thank him on behalf of the board of selectmen for the seven-plus years of service that he provided us, keeping us from getting into trouble, and just greatly appreciate our work, thank you very much.
I'd like to... I'd like to thank you back on that, and Mr. Beckett has kept me well-bursted, and gave me good counsel on town meeting articles, and I'd like to thank him for his service. Thank you.